First order of business, I'd like to go through the role just to be sure that Richard has the proper names. Please, as I read your name, please signify by saying aye. Leon Johnson?
Aye.
Dave Frederickson?
Aye.
Dave Durfee?
Aye.
Ed Leturno?
I'm here.
Aye.
Nelson Brownell?
Yes, yeah.
I'm here.
Okay, very good. Fran Kenny? Fran Kenny? Amy Dodson?
Here, Dodson.
Carrie Bond?
Hi.
Carrie Bond is here. Ron Higgins, I know, will not be here. Unfortunately, he has a medical condition and we wish him the very best. If I'm correct, we have not heard from Fran Kenny or Nelson Brownell. Are either one of those two attending the meeting?
Fran's connecting to audio right now.
Okay.
Because Fran was briefly in the meeting, so.
Okay, so he's around, so just Nelson. All right, I think we can begin. The first order of business is that I'd like to rearrange the agenda. What I'd like to do is to start with the superintendent's report. The reason for that is that I feel that some of the questions that many of us have, and hopefully some of the people that are observing us have, will be answered during his presentation. So, I've forgotten the procedure there. Do we need a motion to do that?
Yes, you do.
You do.
Okay, I'd like for motion to rearrange the agenda so that superintendent's report comes first.
So moved.
You have a sec? All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Is that from your house, really?
No, I'm here. I said, I agree.
Okay, all right. So, we're going to change the general agenda so that the superintendent's report comes first. After that, we'll have public comments. Jim, you're on.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. And we're actually continuing admitting people. I see that's going on on my screen, so unfortunately, we may have to catch up. So, I wanted to address a letter that the board received, that Steve Dixon received, Principal Steve Dixon received, and that I received. And I want to talk first about the question on building ventilation, something that is certainly an important issue. I want to state first that when I first received an inquiry on this and I reached out to the agency of education, Secretary of Education responded to me that it's important to note that building ventilation is in guidance only. There are no regulations concerning school building ventilation. That said, that's not a reason to not go forward, making sure that our buildings are ventilated and can be as healthy as possible. So, I want to go through a timeline for where we have been with ventilation. I also asked Renee Gordon, the SBSU Director of Finance and Operations, to be here tonight so in case I miss anything as I go over this, she'll be able to help me or correct me or point me in the right direction because she has been the leader for the SBSU, dealing with Efficiency Vermont, the various HVAC contractors and engineers that have been through our buildings. So, first, July 1st.
I'm sorry, could I get all the board members to mute their mics while, if they're not speaking? That might be helpful for everyone. Thank you.
Little background now, I said, how do I mute my mic, please? Frank could mute you and unmute you, Dave, too.
Okay.
Okay, we good? So, starting on July 1, the state of Vermont established the indoor air quality grant program with $6.5 million of the coronavirus relief funds. So, July 2nd and 8th, we received emails from Jeff Francis, who is the Vermont Superintendent's Association Director about indoor air quality and the grant program and that there was going to be a webinar on this. Oops, someone's not muted. There we go, I got it. All right, is that better now, the background? So, on July 9, the SBSU submitted an intake form to Efficiency Vermont. That's who has been charged with administrating this money to express our interest in the grant program and participation. So, that was our first contact with EEI, which is Energy Efficient Investments. They're the company that did the energy and ventilation upgrades at the Bennington Elementary Schools. July 10 was the Efficiency Vermont webinar regarding the indoor air quality grants. That was attended by Director Gordon. Efficiency Vermont assigned Alexander Rowe as our energy consultant to the SBSU on July 13th. So, that's who we have been dealing with since July 13th on our applications for energy efficient Vermont monies. So, July 14, Mike Davy from EEI, which is the company Energy Efficient Investments, and James Harrington toured the buildings and conducted visual inspections. And they toured the buildings with the facility directors. And this wasn't just the high school, this is all buildings in the SBSU. We, EEI coordinated with the facility managers and Energy Efficient Vermont on compiling a report for us. That didn't happen right away. It takes a while for them to compile that report. So, a few other dates that happened in between that. So, they compiled the report. On August 3, Efficiency Vermont contacted the SBSU about free indoor air quality monitors to be shipped for all schools in all districts in Vermont. Anybody who's part of applying for this grant money, you have to do an indoor air quality with these monitors. So, on August 5, and there was going to be training on how those monitors go through a webinar. August 5, the indoor air quality monitor quantities were confirmed. And we sent back to Efficiency Vermont, this is how many we needed, and we gave them the shipping addresses because they wanted them shipped to central office, into the individual schools. We said ship them to the individual schools. So, Renee made sure that Efficiency Vermont had all our school shipping addresses. That was August 5. We do not have any of the air quality monitors from Efficiency Vermont yet, and they're citing shipping delays from the manufacturer, and we should have those by the end of September. On August 6, EEI sent us their ventilation report. That is a report that I did share with the school board at the time, and I shared it with the teachers' union at the same time. We met with facility managers and EEI and Efficiency Vermont to review the report findings and what our next steps were. That was also, so that was on August 7. We submitted the report to Efficiency Vermont on August 11. The next day, Efficiency Vermont informed us that they were rejecting the report. They said it lacked specifics, that the report was based on visual inspections and that no mechanical testing was taken. So, they didn't consider the report accurate or reflective of what the real issues were at the problem at the high school. Or actually, any of the schools. They rejected that report for all the schools. We had a good relationship with EEI, I think we still do. I think they were doing us the favor to come in and do the report. We paid nothing for that report. They would have made money if they were awarded some of the work. So, it was like an estimate, but keep in mind with this, there was no mechanical testing, there was no air quality testing on anything that they wrote in that report. But we were under a deadline to submit a report for funding. So, what do we do after that report was rejected? Well, what Efficiency Vermont told us is they wanted more ground level, because by the way, that report ranged like $5 to $8 million in total renovation projects, which EEI would have made a considerable sum of money on if that full project. But that would have required a bond issued for all the schools, and that was not going to happen in any quick order. There were three options under that. One, the cheapest one was probably 1.2 million, but as I said, Efficiency Vermont rejected it for lack of specifics. So, back to the drawing board on ventilation and what Efficiency Vermont advised Renee and I was to bring in local HVAC contractors to again tour the buildings and make recommendations for projects to upgrade like existing equipment, but not necessarily, you know, full-blown replacements for any ventilation systems. So, that took place, I want to say through August 14 through the 28th, Hayden Plumbing and Heating and Control Technologies toured our building, visited sites, developed detailed scopes of work and cost. We submitted those project proposals to Efficiency Vermont for consideration August Some of it was accepted. On September 2, we heard back from Efficiency Vermont. They awarded grants for Congress Street, which is owned by MAU, but that houses are on point program. So, they are paying for the ventilation upgrades to that building. Shasbury Elementary School, Hayden have been given the authorization to proceed with a project on that. The grant application was rejected for all other projects by Efficiency Vermont. And so, totaled to date with about $110,000 funded from Efficiency Vermont. And so, we're back to the drawing board for a third time on ventilation projects for the high school. And so, this time, we're going to pay for an engineering study to be done in our building, in the high school, and that will take place in two weeks. And it'll, or it was going to be, two weeks, and it'll take about two weeks to do the air study. Efficiency Vermont tells us that we'll have the air quality monitors by the end of September. So, what do we do in the meantime? Well, as an SU, we bought $25,000 worth of standalone filtration units, and 54 of those are going to the high school. So, those individual filtration units will be in the director's facility. We're all charged with touring their buildings and then giving Renee the quantity that they needed to order to filter parts of the building where ventilation was not possible. So, as I said, between the East Campus, Congress Street, and the high school building itself, there's 54 of those units that should be here. We have a shipping date of September 18 through the 24th. So, you know, those air purifiers are not a permanent solution. And so, there are some that are going to Congress Street, but when their ventilation project is done, then we'll bring those units back to the high school. And Renee and I are also committed to, as we roll these out, if there's other areas that are identified that need these filtration units, then we will buy more. We don't know yet how much of that is refundable or we're going to get a matching grant from Efficiency Vermont. We're told that approval of all new projects are on hold by Efficiency Vermont because they don't have enough funds to fund the 400 and some odd schools that applied for that pool of money. But we are committed to continue pursuing this because, as I said, the air filtration units are not a permanent solution, but they will be like in our isolation rooms and areas that we can't ventilate. So, kind of brings us up to where we are. So, the important thing is this study that we will do, which is really now our third review of the facilities, hopefully that will be accepted by Efficiency Vermont. And if there is additional funding available, then we will pursue it. If not, we will be to the board with recommendations on, from this engineering study. We'll share the, just like we shared the EEI report with everybody, we will share the report that we get from this engineering study with everybody. We can serve a public document. I'll share it with the union, just like I shared the previous one with the union. And the board will have to decide if we don't have any matching funds from Efficiency Vermont, do we have money in reserve funds or anywhere else from the budget that we can attack this problem? But we'll mention that, and I think those of you who have been on the board long enough, you know that for at least a couple of years now, I've been advocating that the board needs to authorize a full building engineering study. This isn't the only issue affecting our high school. It's a building that's almost 60 years old. We all have our pet projects with the building, whether it's, you know, artificial turf outside, rebuilding the locker room, the bathrooms in the school, the bathrooms outside, the weight room. They're all valuable projects in a building that, you know, is outdated. I worry, and you've heard me say this before, I worry about what's under the floor and the walls and above the ceiling. So, but it's a building that we have to protect because I don't think, you know, there's no matching funds from the state of Vermont for building these schools. And a rough estimate of a new high school would be $200 million, maybe more. And so, we have to protect the building that we have. So, it is in this year's budget to do that full building engineering study. Paul Danzrow had put that in, and Paul left this in June, as you know. So, you will see an RFP for engineering studies for the whole building to come back. Before, because one of these I've advocated before, we spend a lot of money on this building to make sure that it's a building that we can get another 20 years out of or longer. But I do think that the standalone ventilation units will be the short-term solution. And as I said, you know, 54 coming to the high school, and we will buy more if we need to. So, that's my report on where we are in ventilation. Then, Jim, do you want to entertain questions from the board? Renee's here. Any questions from the board on what I just reported that I could help you with?
Tim's muted. I think he was talking, but.
All right. Well, I can see Dave Durfee raise his hand, so he can unmute himself.
Yeah. Hi, thanks, Jim. Just a couple of clarifying questions. The second round of, the second attempt, I guess, to get funding from Efficiency Vermont, the one where they provided some funds for Shasbury Elementary.
And Congress.
In Congress, yeah. Was the failure or inability to get more funding due to just constraints on the funds available, or were there problems with that application as well?
No, the main part of that application addressed the office, the main office, guidance, nurses' office, and Renee's here, so she might be able to answer. I believe that was rejected because it wasn't a high enough student area for them to spend their money on, just like we can't have any funding for dealing with ventilation issues at central office because there aren't students in there. Renee, am I accurate on that statement about the office?
Yes, that's correct. Alex Rowe with Efficiency Vermont clarified at that point and said that they're prioritizing funds based on instructional space. And the project that we had included for instructional space was rejected because it didn't have specifics enough, which is what they originally told us. And she said that they wouldn't be able to provide us with any funding until we actually did a building assessment. So, that's where we are.
And that's what's going to happen next with building assessment.
And the original July assessment was done in a day? All the buildings in the district were visited in a single day? Is that right?
No. And the engineer from EEI seems to be a little mystified because he claims to us that he did the same project in other schools in Vermont, and the same type of report that he did was approved. So, it may be the dollar level of the report that they could have ultimately, because they were pretty clear to us that they weren't going to fund everything we were asking for, and they didn't know to what level they were going to fund it because there's only $6 million to go around through the whole state. And, you know, here, we were asking for $5 to $8 million on one project, or the 1.2 million would have been the low end. And then, it actually would have turned out to be a little bit less than that because they had included, they also inspected the village school in North Bennington, which is not something that we would have been funding, so maybe we were a little under. But the step one part, the lower money one, was included buying a lot of these ventilation units. And Efficiency Vermont, I think, if they approve those purchases, Dave, it'll be for areas that can't be handled by another project. So, that's like their, it's a perfectly acceptable way to filter the air in the building, but it's not the most efficient way to do it, or it's not a long-term solution.
Right. Just one other, well, I'll just quickly say that there is money, additional state money in the budget that is now, I think, in the Senate's hands.
That's what we hear, that it's in the Senate.
Another week probably before that gets through. Just one other thing I'm remembering from my Shasbury board days, that there was, and Fran may be able to comment on this too, but weren't there air quality monitors that Shasbury has?
Yes, you did.
And could they have borrowed it?
Jeff Johnson, oh, I don't know, Renee, does Jeff and Shasbury still have their air monitors? And I don't know if they meet the specifications of what Efficiency Vermont is requiring for this test, but we can look into that. Renee, do you know that?
I would assume that Jeff still has them because there were, you know, there's an area of the school that still needs to have its ventilation addressed, so they may be using it in those areas.
So, they may be using, yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking, if we, in short-term basis, if we needed to, you know, satisfy ourselves that the air quality in particular spaces and other buildings.
So, they're saying September 30, we will have the air quality monitors, and October 2 is slated for the webinar on how they are to be used and how the results are calculated.
Okay, good, thanks.
Hey, Jim?
Yes.
So, it's been three months that we've been back and forth with Efficiency Vermont. And at what point do we move on, look for other solutions, instead of keep beating on the same door?
Yeah. I think that's where we are right now. That's why we're paying the $18,000 to do this analysis of the building, and then we'll then back to the board, and the board will have to decide whether they want to spend local funds to address the issues and prioritize that. And still, you know, as Dave said, we are told that there is a second round of funding waiting for Senate approval. And if that happens, then hopefully, we'll get some type of a match. Because the matches were pretty generous for Congress Street and Shasbury. It was like, you know, 60% on one project and 70% on another. So, hopefully, we could recoup some of what we spent, but no, I say we don't wait until whether Efficiency Vermont approves or not. So, we get the engineering study and see. Because the other problem with the grant money is it has to be, the work has to be completed by December 30. And, you know, while we're hearing from contractors is there's limited availability of equipment, and workers are already committed to a lot of other projects. So, even if we're approved the money, for a major, if it is a major project, rather than say a simple fix to some vent fan long ago turned off and nobody knew about it, and it needs to be replaced, you know, the money might be beyond what Efficiency Vermont would give us anyway. So, no, I don't think, you're absolutely right. We should not wait, and it's not our intent. That's why we moved forward. We weren't going to wait to see if Efficiency Vermont would pay for the analysis of the building, though I know Renee has talked to our representative from Efficiency Vermont, and they know that we're doing the study and approve of it.
Okay, I just have one more question, two more questions. The air purifiers that we're going to be receiving in the next couple of weeks, can you or Dr. Nixon talk about how you're going to determine what rooms those go in? And then, can you also talk about your confidence in the science behind them? Like, just speak to, you know, this is a good solution in the meantime to keep everyone healthy, and that it's actually providing, you know, answering some of the questions that are at hand. Thanks.
So, these are the units approved and recommended by Efficiency Vermont that they meet their standards. So, that's all I can say about the science to it. And as I said, the determination of how many each school building requested, because the SU didn't put a limit on it, we asked the schools to tell us how many they needed. So, Renee worked with the facilities director to determine that. I don't know, Renee, if you can add any specifics to that?
I think Tony was probably, well, initially targeting the office and the guidance area because of, you know, the indication that there's no ventilation in those spaces. And then, he basically has some extras to put in areas that are of concern or even occupied, because I don't think all classrooms are even occupied at this point. And then, again, once we have the Congress Street project up, that'll be another 10 that will be freed up to give us more coverage. And again, we can certainly purchase more. I was pleasantly surprised that when we put the order in, because we ordered over 100 SEY, that they were all available.
Yeah. And I was, even though it sounded like a lot of money, I was expecting a bigger bill. So, I told Renee that, you know, we need to reserve additional funds because we may need more depending on, but we may also have others available from other school if they have smaller ventilation projects that get completed, that we can bring even more to the high school. It's important to note, too, that we're going to be using more energy this winter in all our buildings, because we will be keeping windows open where possible, which sounds, you know, kind of primitive, but it is a recommended method at buildings where possible. And dampers, particularly at the middle school, the dampers for the exhaust of airs will be opened to what they're referring to as pandemic limits, which means the air is going to get changed more often. So, our energy bills are going to escalate this winter, and you may also find our buildings colder, too. Jackie Kelly had her hand up, Jim?
I took it down.
Sorry.
Well, what I was going to ask is, but, you know, when they were talking about Shasbury and the other schools, it's just that the elementary, I think they're covered because we did these major projects the last three years. Is that correct?
The Bennington schools, so Molly Stark Monument and Bennington Elementary, they did a $4.4 million energy and ventilation upgrade. So, they are up to the standard and they need to exceed the guidance. So, they're okay. Other than changing the filters to a higher-grade filter for better filtration, that will happen with the Bennington schools. And that may be something at some point, you know, we're going to keep this building. That may be something that, you know, this board's going to have to consider, and that's why we, first, we need this study here, but we also need to go up for an RFP for what, for the whole building. Because like, you know, what's the state of your plumbing system? What's the state of your electrical system? What's the state of your heating system? You've been, you know, your roof, you have that on a maintenance plan, you've done a good job with that. And the building, you know, is clean and it's been well-kept, but it's aging. So, we need a full-blown engineering study to, and then, the challenge to the board would be to prioritize from that study what needs to be done, and then, how do we fund it?
And is that the same procedures that we use for the elementaries?
We went up for an RFP for a performance bond for the elementary schools. So, that may not work in this situation because a performance bond guarantees you that whatever you spend will be, you'll recapture in savings from energy. So, the issue here is more about ventilation and not necessarily, you know, efficiency Ventilation and not necessarily you know efficiently heating the building and and. When we were at the elementary school it scouted out as performance bond but then it became just a straight bond because once Bennington Elementary School. Replaced the windows the windows don't have a buyback that that allows it to uh qualify for performance bond you'd never get that cost back. In in just what you're saving in utility bills and uh but for the same holds true for the Bennington schools. They're going to see their utility bills increase this winter because as we open up um dampers to recirculate more frequently. There's going to be lost energy savings for sure but health is more important.
Thank you.
So I I guess to sum up energy is I mean ventilation is we have a temporary solution. And we're still pursuing the long term solution and Dave it was good to hear that that there is another round of funding in the Senate I hope that. Is it another week of session after this?
Yeah, the uh and and we're supposed to be wrapping up next Friday it it. I I don't know what sort of delay there'll be administratively before you know. Efficiency Vermont.
Encourage all board members.
What's that?
I encourage all board members and everyone listen to let our senators know that we need support for a second round of funding.
Thank you Jim we can Leon.
Yeah, I was going to ask you do we need to go ahead and make a motion to uh approve the uh the the the. The funding to go ahead and for the ventilators and not be waiting um I'll move that if that's what in order for us to do.
I we we have the the board is as given the administration uh at least. I have given the administration go ahead and do what has to be done we have money in our budget it's a bottom line budget so the money is there. And we can we can spend it as we as we see fit and this certainly is a is a situation that that needs to be dealt with immediately.
And Renee has already sent that authorization correct Renee we have a commitment from them to have that study done.
Yes, and I I just wanted to clarify um for the record that um the the proposal that we got from Hayden is. Um just under twenty thousand dollars and they'll be working with alongside Control Tech. On evaluation of our equipment and their proposal was just shy of nineteen and so we're looking at about thirty eight thousand dollars total. For this analysis.
If there are no other are no other questions on the general.
Ed Letourneau has his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
When they're doing the building study I think they should look at the oil boilers and the wood burning plant. To make to see if they can be modified so that they can run together if necessary. We may wind up with some kind of wood chip shortage at some point or an oil shortage. And there may be valves that need to be installed or changed out to to allow both of them to run at the same time.
The um if there's not any questions further questions from the board on ventilation I'd like to address the second pack of the letter that you received. Read from it so it said in addition to the information on ventilation um they'd like to communicate in writing. Clearly established protocols that are consistent with state health guides for the following so I'd like to read this this statement to you. This is our purpose statement and for this the plan for a safe school opening using Vermont AOE guidelines. To begin in the fall of twenty twenty by implementing best practices in health and safety in the covid nineteen era. Remote learning is phase one more restrictive in person learning is phase two and less respective in person learning is phase three. Um updates are made uh after reviewing the most current agency of education in Vermont Department of Health Guides. And uh we highlight them on our website every every Friday the SU sends. Uh an email out to families and to teachers association used to be at noon time. The teacher association asked if we could adjust and send it to the staff at eleven o'clock and we've been doing this every Friday since July tenth. The union so the teacher association asked if we would start sending it out to the staff at eleven o'clock on Fridays. So that they could have it at least an hour before the family uh received it because what they were finding and and you can picture this happening. Um Facebook was uh exploding before teachers could even get to read what we were sending out so. As a courtesy we send it to the teachers association an hour ahead on every Friday and it's it's updates on. How remote learning and on safety and health so after reading the letter I think that um. We could do a better job at making it more easily accessible and so we made a change right away to our website tomorrow yes uh yesterday. So that you can hit one tab and the pull down menus for resources for staff on covid nineteen is all there in one spot. Our our website isn't static we we change it constantly we update. Uh the guidance as we get it from the H C education or from our nurses or from other resources so and we'll continue to do that. And there's always ways that we can be better to communicate to to everyone as we get feedback that we know that you know. People are either have missed what we sent out or didn't understand what we sent out and we try to refine it and be even clearer so um. Because we know everyone myself included is under stress anxiety um there's some fear. Uh and we're in uncharted waters and uh we keep saying nobody asked for this. This is nobody's fault and I truly believe that the people I work with are doing the best they can. But we will continue to tweak and improve uh how we communicate this information so. I sent um you uh a point by point um I'm not I'm not going to read I'll read some highlights but I'm not going to read it all. But the question about screening and monitoring of the virus symptoms for students and staff uh that information was um. Shared with staff initially in August twenty eighth and then shared again on um the updated on the ninth. Of September and then shared with staff again uh same with building safety protocols and this is all this is all information. That is is on our website first gets sent out to staff then gets archived on our website so we have addressed building safety protocols there. Safe travel protocol is has been addressed but that has not been shared with everyone it's really more for about uh. For reviewed with principals and shared with key staff who may be involved and moving from building to building not everyone is. Uh on uh nine three we reviewed with principals and and then new update on nine four what to do if someone is sick. Um supporting students to wear masks and promote health and safety that is in our um. SBSU delivery of a strong and healthy start and that was updated on on nine ten. Uh what to do if students become ill at school the audiences for nurses and administrators that was new on nine ten so not. Not everyone sees everything that we're generating uh because it the audiences may not. There are some things that are for every audience but that one is really to do with you know what nurses and principals do if someone becomes sick um. Then uh the newest the newest acronym that I've learned is WAM which is wash wash um. No, I'm having a little WAM wash arms uh and wash. Laura Bedrow is here tell me what warm is again.
Wash your hands, arms, length, mask.
Mask, thank you.
And it was created by all the uh we have a great group of behavior specialists under the direction of Jessa Ordway our. SBSU social emotional coach and reviewed by our nurses and that's coming up.
I needed an elementary teacher background to to really to do that thank you Laura so. I I don't want to take any time and go through this I will send this uh. Uh to both the union and to uh Megan who sent the letter and. They've taken um I met I met with my administrative staff and we all went through this because we take this serious and we've addressed. Uh on this document where you saw I sent it to you and we'll send it to the letter writer and to the union. So that they see that where we feel that um we've addressed that and where it is on our our website and if we've missed something then. We'd welcome more feedback because as I said we don't we don't it's new for all of us and as we go through this we'll continue. To uh to send out more information because we too want everyone to be safe in our building we want our students to be able to return. And be help healthy and safe while they learn we want to get everyone back into our buildings and uh and that will start. Uh September twenty eighth we will be doing a hybrid rotation there'll be fifty percent of students in on uh Monday Tuesday. Uh asynchronous day will be Wednesday Thursday Friday will then be the other fifty percent I should note that some of the students that are already in the building now. And may in fact be in school four days a week um because those are some of our students that uh remote working is um. Is not is not working for so we do have um students who started in the building on Monday and I think they're going to hear about that. From your principals when when we get there Kim did you have your hand up?
Yeah, yes I did Jim I just would like your uh feeling as to the these the teaching staff. How receptive are they to the ideas that are being presented and are they as a as a general. Uh rule of being helpful and want to get back into the school. And do you feel that you are pretty well informed about their concerns as they arise?
Well, I can't speak for how every teacher feels like I can I'll go back to tell you that you know all summer long every. Monday at one o'clock and now that school students are back in the mail I mean every Tuesday at one o'clock. And now that students some students are back in the building that shifted to three o'clock um. Nick Gold Laura and other administrators as needed based on the topic um we meet with the union president vice president. Of both the teachers association and the support staff and we've done that throughout the summer. Keep the communicative and they bring us the concerns that they're hearing and we try to address the meetings and we adjust our guidance. Often from what they're telling us and I'll say well we can we can on our Friday communication we'll make sure that we include something on that. I think uh as far as what is going on in the buildings directly I think that you know I I asked uh. The principals didn't talk about when they give their report that's why we have we do have the principal report on today's agenda about how um. How school has been has been going I do know that um we monitored attendance to see if we saw any. Uh downticks or upticks in attendance and the report that I have from HR is we are uh and I I mean staff attendance. That we are running exactly where we were last year uh we haven't seen any changes in in uh staff attendance from this time last year.
Jim, one last question uh do you feel that the association the state association is um. Is influencing the attitude that our teachers have towards reopening and and what's happening?
You don't really want me to answer that publicly do you? I um I I will say that I I think the local we've had great cooperation with. The local support staff association and teachers association everything from when they first agreed to take no increase. In the spring for this for this year and that is still you know a remarkable um gesture from them. And it's given us uh the funds some of the funds that we need to do what you know we're doing here and um. The uh our our weekly meetings have been I think productive and one of the lines that I keep saying that. Even though we may not agree uh in the meetings we always agree to continue the conversation going and continuing to meet. So I I I think uh but then there are other means of communication so. Uh you know the the letter the board received did not come from uh the union it came from union members. And I still take that seriously and we're addressing that's why we're addressing that tonight um it 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 wasn't something that. Um was mentioned in any of our weekly meetings with the union I mean ventilation comes up and we discuss it at at every meeting I have apprised them of like. As we were going through that timeline and in real time as we were going through like when efficiency Vermont rejected the grants I let the win the unions know that in our. In our weekly meetings so trying to keep the lines of communication open between the uh SBSU administration. And the staff and we're going to continue to do it but as I said if we can do it better we will try.
Thank you are there any other questions for Jim concerning?
Amy has her hand up Kim.
Okay.
Yeah, I just wanted to um Jim thanks for that really thorough explanation about some topics that are pretty concerning. And um I appreciate what you're saying about there's always room for improvement um about communication. I think the steps you're taking on the website are important and I'd encourage you to continue to like. Find ways to get that information to really very clear plain speak text as opposed to links. Um and things like that I think that you can't under overestimate the importance of just everything just being laid out there. Um.
We.
The se- the second thing I want to say is it's concerning to me that. The staff felt that they had to resort to to this communication. I think it speaks to a larger issue about um how they feel they. Might be able to communicate with the administration um. I welcome the communication I was very glad to get the letter to know what's going on but. I've always thought that the board should be you know the the there's many steps between. Staff and reaching out to the board and I just want to. Move forward thinking about what we can take away from that what that implies about the communication structure that that's. In existence at the high school and and really evaluate if there's some larger problems so those are the two things thank you.
The the first part of the question is uh so we have spent a little time looking at other people's websites to see if there's way we could. Make it clear we did even spend a little time on the Southwest Vermont Medical Center website today looked at that you know how they are. Uh relaying um messages and the other thing you will see uh hopefully next week we just. Kind of proved the artwork right now but there's a couple of things we are uh taking ads in the banner asking for parents to make sure that they. Update they can bring it up because it gives me a time to mention it here to anybody who's watching for parents to uh update their contact information. Because if we don't have your current email address or you've changed your cell phone number you're not getting you may not be getting our emails or getting our. Text alerts or K K twelve calls um and and that's important that we need that so we're we're. Going to be doing a little publicity campaign to make sure that everybody's upgraded their contact information that we have it. So that that's the other part and then the other communication I'll 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 say this right so I. I've been meeting every week with the union leadership to keep communication open and. Um and we responded pretty much immediately to this letter you know it took a while to compile it again and I will. I wanted to speak to the board first before I uh send uh send the response out so. That'll go out after after this meeting to both the union um officers and to the letter writer which. Um and yeah I I'm certainly concerned about it but again there's no way to tell how many staff members you know there's no signatures on the letter. There's no it it I don't know how many people you know feel that way that would be. That would be another conversation because that would be helpful as so that we can move the conversation forward.
Yeah, I agree, thank you.
Are there are there any other questions uh before we move on? If not we we we'll certainly during the principals report we'll have an opportunity to to learn more about. The relationship between the the teachers the students and the administration so let's go on I'd like to move on to. Public comments are there any?
If I can say Tim on public comments so that we can recognize that there if you go down to the bottom of your screen and you see the reaction button. I'm going to you'll see like now you can see on my screen there's a thumbs up so that will let uh. The chair and Frank Barnes who's monitoring the meeting to see that you wish to speak during public comment and that way we can make sure you get called on so you go to the bottom. Right side of the screen you'll see reactions and you and you hit the thumbs up and that's how we'll know you want to speak so.
Very good.
Uh there's also a hand a hand raising icon so either either one will work and if you uh if you want to speak if that you can go ahead and do that. And I'll I'll be scanning across three screens. And I'll, I'll be scanning across three screens. I think there are a lot of people in this meeting. And, uh, as I see the hands come up, I, I will just call on them and, and unmute them and, and they can speak. Is that okay?
Thank you.
Just, everyone needs to say their name so that Richard can record who's speaking, because he won't be able to see it. So just please ask that you say your name first.
I, I'd like to make a little comment first. Uh, it's directions. So if you're on an iPad or iPhone, it's up at the top right and it's under participants.
Okay, first hand up is, uh, is Megan, uh, Morgan?
Uh, good evening, superintendent Kena, members of the school board. Um, I first wanna start off by saying thank you so much for the update on, um, both ventilation and the detailed timeline and, uh, for updating, uh, the website. I didn't, I didn't know that you had updated the website with all that information. And that's, that's awesome. Thank you so much for that. Um, I, I am here tonight to speak about the health and safety of the MAU high school building. Um, and as I know you're aware, and you have the, the letter we sent, uh, the review conducted by Energy Efficient Investments found, and I know, and I know there are problems with that report, um, as you stated, uh, that there are twenty-four main building classrooms, um, the nurses' office, staff, staff and student restrooms, a bunch of areas of concern. Um, so with ninth graders returning on the twenty-eighth, um, other than the, uh, the, the fact that we know that standalone ventilation units have been ordered, we still don't have a clear, uh, report on the safety of the school, as, as you said, because, uh, that's, um, the training for the, um, uh, monitoring units, you said, was October second. Um, and so we have no ventilation assessment, yet we're having students return. And we already have a majority of staff in the building. So we, uh, since we as educators operate in loco parentis, in lieu of parents, um, we need our school to be a safe place for students to learn. And we all want to return to in-person learning. I, I can't stress that enough. We all want to return to in-person learning. Um, but we must have confidence that it's safe for our students, ourselves and our community. And right now, um, we do not have that confidence at this time, uh, mostly because those, those standalone units, um, have not arrived yet. Uh, we're expecting them, um, before the twenty-fourth. But if, um, if those aren't in yet, we are still sending, um, you know, maybe two hundred students into a building with inadequate ventilation. Um, so we're just saying that we're concerned. Um, and we wanna make sure that we're keeping ourselves, our students, and our community safe. Thank you.
Next, Frank? Are there any other public comments?
Yes, hello.
Good. Please give your name.
My name is Megan Winslow. I am a foreign language teacher at the high school. Um, I'm also coming to you today as a representative of our faculty at the high school, as a graduate of the high school and as a community member. Um, and I also have been having some internet troubles. So I may, I'm just gonna turn off my videos that doesn't boot me out. And I do wanna say that part, partly because of my internet issues at home, um, that made teaching from home this spring very difficult. Um, it was very hard to have all of my students be able to hear me all of the time. So I have been teaching from the building these past couple of weeks. Um, and I need to go into school. Not only do I want to be in school, I need to go into school in order to have access to the technology that I need to teach my class effectively. Um, but I would like to say that the lack of information, um, the lack of clear information, transparent information coming out from the district and from our school has not been giving me the confidence that this is the time to be moving our timeline, timeline up from what was the end of October to what is currently about a week and a half from now. Um, our students, families, and staff, I believe, and I believe all of us do, deserve structure and clarity of communication from our administration. And currently, teachers do not have the information that we need to feel that going back to school in phase two hybrid model is safe for anyone coming back into the building. Um, and our building administrators also do not appear to have the information that they need. This was made clear at a faculty meeting today. For example, we do not have clear answers about things such as attendance policies, grading policies, cleaning protocols. Um, we know that everything is changing. We know that this is a difficult time for everyone. But I would like to make clear that best practices are important to put into place, even if they are not the law. Um, and plans for a variety of different circumstances need to be made and clearly communicated. So one of the questions that I have right now is, um, different scenarios for COVID outbreaks that might occur in the school. So what would the specific protocol be if a teacher or a staff member were to become sick? What about if there were multiple? What if there was an outbreak in our school? What if there was an outbreak in our community? Um, and I would like to see some information come out on these, um, specific situation. Thank you. And I believe there are others from our faculty who'd like to speak.
Next, please.
Can I just jump in?
Sure.
Am I elbowing my way to the front? Sorry.
Um, but just please give your name.
Just say your name.
Yes, this is Katie Schonbeck. I'm a teacher. Hi, Tim.
Hi there.
Um, I'm a teacher at the high school, um, and I would like to echo, um, what I've been hearing in terms of appreciation, Jim, for you laying out the timeline. Um, it's that kind of information that helps to allay fears and anxiety, um, especially in a time when we have not a lot of answers, or at least good answers sometimes to many problems. Um, but I wanted to, to, um, to also add to the timeline that you very thoroughly laid out. Um, I think it started, for me, that timeline started earlier. Um, so pre-COVID, we have had building issues. I'm very relieved to hear you recognizing that, um, for example, in the math hallway. So for those of you that don't know, the, um, bottom part of our building, of the new part of the building, of what, and it was eighty-five something, um, was built into the, into the side of, um, into the parking lot, basically. So it's kind of like living in the basement with some windows. Um, twice a year, our, our hallway gets flooded, literally flooded. Um, people fall. I've fallen twice. Um, uh, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's not a fun place to be. We have dehumidifiers now and there was some, um, some work done at the entrances to the, um, to those, to that hallway, I believe, last year, maybe the year before, to try to mitigate some of that flooding. But it's a basement and basements flood. We know how that happens and it happens there. Um, so I'm, um, I had, had requested, um, at a, a head teacher meeting back in, uh, two thousand nineteen, so this time last year, to have some sort of air quality test be done. And Mr. Nixon asked Mr. Dancerow to do that. And I believe Paul completed that air quality or air quality, um, test of the building, including the math hallway. I mean, I was concerned about black mold in the ceiling. Um, you know, I have, I have, uh, staff that have, um, respiratory issues, some very severe respiratory issues right now. I have, I have lots of students with asthma and this, that, and the other, and, you know, so this is a concern of mine. Um, and so I believe that report was, um, was completed in February. And I don't know that, how, how helpful it might be right now, um, to answering some of the air quality issues, which the engineering report did not include, right? It was just structural issue, concerns fans that don't turn on, right? But what's not in our air and what's in our air. So I'm hopeful that that report might be included with any reports that you release. Um, I know that, uh, that, that the union has asked or requested for that. I think there's a protocol now, there's a, we fill it form out. And I'm, I'm not really sure of the process, but I know the report's there and maybe that would be helpful. Um, uh, I also wonder if it would make sense to be considering how we're communicating to parents in another way. So, um, I know that I go to a bazillion different places trying to understand what these air filters that are coming into my classroom are going to do and not do to keep my students safe. And it's really hard to sort all that out. So I appreciate what, um, what Ms. Dobson said about, oh, where's the, what's the science? Um, the numbers lady, right? So what's the science behind picking this, um, filter as opposed to another system? What will it do? What won't it do? Um, I feel if I were a parent right now of a kid going into the high school, I would need some more information in order to be able to make the decision, is it safe for me to send my kid in or not? And I feel concerned about, um, you know, I don't wanna be the pot stirrer. I don't wanna like freak people out. They're already worried enough. But I want our parents to be ma- able to make informed decisions about, um, is this the right time to send my kid who has, um, seasonal allergies into a building? Is the right, is the right time for me to send my kid in, um, who has, has asthma issues? You know what I mean? Like I just, I feel like there's more information that we can give parents. Um, and I also agree with Amy, um, in that, that it needs to be in a way that's really clear. Here's the, here's the guidance from the state. It's guidance. We do some things and we don't do other things. But if, if I'm a parent who's going to the state and assuming that we're doing all these things, I really need to know that, oh yeah, we're doing these things, but we're not doing those things. And this is why, and this is why we think it's okay. So I know I'm, I'm taking up way too much time, but I really, really appreciate, um, this opportunity. And I also just wanna say I'm happy and willing and able to talk to anybody about any of this at any moment, if it's helpful. And Tim, I was so happy to see my kids went like, there were little boxes on the screen. Like that's what makes it worthwhile, is our kids. Um, and, 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 and then it's all okay. You know, without kids, why bother? Um, so don't worry, Tim. We love our kids. We wanna be back in the building as much as we can. We just want it to be safe. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Uh, Katie, anyway, great, great to hear from you. Do we have any other teachers who would like to speak on any of these issues? Or anybody else?
Yes. I've been trying to get your attention for a minute.
Okay, just please give us your name.
This is Mia Schultz. I am a parent and advocate, community advocate. Um, so I was wondering, since the date to, for returning freshman is moved up, what I was wondering as a parent, if you could provide what a school day looks like for our kids? From the time they get on the bus to the time they get to school and what happens at lunch? And I mean, I understand I have two freshmen. Um, one of them has the same kids in every class and one of them does not. And I don't know what the difference of the two and how you guys have arranged the schedules. So it's been really difficult navigating and figuring out, um, how, how things work just digitally. So I'm afraid that, um, sending my kids into, um, the, the unknown. So if, if it were possible in your communication to let us know what a day looks like, um, that would be really helpful for us. Thank you.
Jim, do you want one of the principals to answer that or wait for their report?
During the report, they should be able to address that for you.
Very good. If you will stay on, uh, stay with us, uh, as Jim has just mentioned, when the principals give their report, uh, one of the things that they could do would be to give a, a brief description of, of what a student's day would look like. Are there any other?
Actually, I would like a detailed description, not a, a brief one. And I would like the rest of the parents who are not here to also be able to have that information.
Right.
So did you not get a, an email from the school, uh, with, uh, what the schedule is for your child?
I got a schedule, but it didn't look like what happens when my kids walk in the door. It didn't say where, are there temperatures being taken? Are they staying with the same pods? I'm ju- are they staying with the same students? What does lunch look like? How do they, you know, uh, what happens, as one of the teachers here mentioned, when or if, uh, somebody tests as positive in the school? How do we address that? And what sick leave looks like for attendance and things like that for, for kids? So that kind of thing, I haven't gotten any information on, no.
Very good. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Yes, hello, hello.
Hello, hello.
My name is Asher.
Please give your name.
Yes, sir. My name is Asher Edelson. I'm a member of the community. Um, I work at VPI, so I work with, uh, kids throughout the week. Um, so what I would like to know, and, um, you know, throughout this conversation, what I would like to hear are some thoughts on how we can address issues pertaining to children with disabilities. Having been a child with a disability in the school system myself, I can attest that it's certainly not easy. And with all the difficulties that come with COVID, I imagine it can't be any easier. So I'm, I'm eager to hear, um, any thoughts that people have on how we can make, um, education more equitable for students with disabilities and from other walks of life. And I, I'm just eager to learn. So thank you so very much.
Thank you. Jim, do you wanna have somebody answer that now or what, what would be the best way?
What would your, I'm making a note with the name Asher. So we'll, so if we follow the policy, we're not, we're not, you would tell me not to answer, but I would get a response to you. And, um, cause we, we are, we already have some students in the building now. They've started and, uh, you know, equity is, uh, a very important issue with me. In fact, before this meeting, uh, I was in interviews with Megan as we, uh, began the process to, and, I'm sorry, to interview, uh, an equity coordinator for our district that will bring enlightenment to all of us as we deal with this. It's something that I've fought for, for, uh, two years to get included in the budget. And then I was, when that went down, our associate, uh, my assistant superintendent, Marv Udrow, uh, was able to get that included in our grant. And I'm pleased that we're moving forward with that. And the interview should conclude next weekend. Uh, that, and it is also with our director of students, so, um, student services. It, it's, it's job one. I, I believe in opening our doors for all students.
Jim, is there someone that could get back to that gentleman to see if they could speak to him about the programs that are available for students?
I made note of his name and, um, and we'll, uh, do, we'll, uh, I don't want you to give me a phone number in the middle of the meeting or, or anything like that. But if you reach out to my office tomorrow, I will let my administrative assistant know that I told you to call me and then we'll find a way that we can connect.
That, 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 do you have that telephone number? Four, four, seven, seven, five, oh, one.
You have it memorized, Tim, huh?
You know me. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. You call tomorrow and give your information and we will get back to you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
Can I just go or is Frank calling on people?
It's okay. You can go, you can go ahead, because everybody seems to be able to unmute themselves anyway, so.
Okay.
But if you just give, give your, give your name, please.
Yeah, I'm Lynn Sweet, uh, the chorus teacher at the high school. This is actually my twenty-fifth year of teaching in this district. I can hardly believe that. And I really appreciate the time and all of you board members for all that you're doing to try to make this work in a really challenging time for all of us. I just wanna echo what my colleagues have said. And I wanna make it very clear to board members and any community members that this information and these things that the teachers are bringing to you are in no way an effort to not do our jobs, to not have to, you know, report to work. Um, I teach singing and singing on Zoom is incredibly difficult. And I want nothing more than to get my kids back in front of me. But I want it to be safe for them, for me, for my husband, who has three high-risk, um, you know, in the high-risk categories. So it, it is in no way, I know a lot of people think that teachers are whiners and complainers. That is not the case. Myself and my colleagues have worked as hard or harder than we've ever worked in our lives trying to make this work for our students. Thank you.
And I wanna, I, I agree with you more. The children's staff have worked and administrators have never worked harder to do something that no one, no one ever planned to do. And so, and I do not take any of these comments, uh, for the other way than how they're meant, that everyone, I said, everyone, the anxiety is high, the fear is there, the concerns are there. I acknowledge it. I have those myself. So we'll continue to work. So we'll continue to work to 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 get this done, um and get everyone back safely. And I welcome the feedback. I welcome, like, I know that whatever answer I gave tonight is only going to spawn more questions and send them and we'll try to address them. Now, uh, that's the only way we're all gonna get through this and get our students back to the building is if we keep, you know, the line of communication open. So I I I applaud all of you for for what you're doing and being asked to do. And particularly, not that, you know, music is my favorite, but you know, the difficulty of what, you know, you've done and some of the wonderful projects that you've sent us to look with your students. They need it. Our students need, they need the arts. They need, they need everything that we do in our schools. We need, we're trying to move forward with sports. I hope that we reach phase three and um and we're able to have games. If anything, so I can just see what seven-on-seven touch football looks like at the high school level. But it's, i- i- it's all, it's all interesting. It's all, it's it's more than a little scary. And um it it's a big move to get us to do, to do this. But again, I welcome the comments and we'll continue to try to address them.
Very, thank, thank you, Jim. I'd like to to move on then.
Tim, can I just say one?
There's uh another uh another member of the community, our palm.
Okay, let me just say something real quick here about Ms. Schultz's comment about the communication to parent. That's basic stuff, like that, that should just be in the parents' hands. They should know what the bus looks like. They should know where they're washing their hands. They should know the temper- they should know every detail. And I'd just like to um really encourage somehow for that information to get out to the parents. Even if it seems like, yes, of course they're gonna wash their hands, or yes, of course they're, just spill it.
And we've done that. This video's on our website for hand washing. We've sent that to our weekly communications to parents. So there, I would encourage you, if anyone hasn't seen our websites, and I send that to the boards too. So there, that is there.
Well, so so I guess, I guess my my theme of the night is something is missing. Just that there's there's something missing. We heard it from the parents last month and we're hearing it from the staff tonight. So that's, that's just, I and there's not a right and wrong, but but the, but something's missing. That's all I wanna say. All right.
Uh, thank, thank you, Amy. Uh, we all, we all are working. We all wanna see it work. And we all have the things that we would like to see uh maybe done a little bit differently, and we're all pushing for it. And I think that's a healthy, healthy attitude. But I think that all of us, I know that all the board members, and I'm sure that the administration staff are anxious to do what's best for the kids and get the kids back in school. And we'll keep on working towards that. So I'd like to move ahead if there are.
Go ahead. Can I jump in here? I was called upon.
Of course, go ahead.
So my name's Roy Palmer. I'm a special education teacher in the high school. Um, and I, I wanna jump on board with my colleagues about, you know, the extreme concerns um for the students returning prematurely. Eventually, the staff returning prematurely and the amount of information that is still yet to be found out that would really be that more concrete scientific information around the safety of the students and staff having to re-enter the building. So I think that's really something that needs to be taken into consideration of whether or not this is happening too fast, given the lack of information that is there, but also how this information even for parents is not being communicated. There's been a lot of confusion surrounding discrepancies in schedules, um busing, um, you know, even getting work to students. Um, that is something that has been a very complicated issue, not only because not everything can be online for some of our students. Uh, we have students who are need that very much hands-on support. And not everything can happen through a Zoom meeting on, they need things hands-on that multi, you know, multisensory instruction needs to take place with a lot of students. Um, but I also wanna just also let Mr. Edelson know and other parents too is that um, the special education staff, both as teachers and as case managers right now, are working very diligently and strategizing things that can be done and modifications that need to be made and trying to maintain that open line of communication. Um, so please, just do what you can to reach out, okay? And take Mr. Colkeen up on his offer, okay?
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
There is um one more, yeah. Chris Hanson's hand is.
Okay, Chris?
Uh, yeah, thank you. I'm Chris Hanson. I also am a teacher at the high school. And I just wanted to um reinforce some of the really important statements that are being made here um by my colleagues and members of the community. Um, and also by uh Amy Dobson, who is being very articulate in summarizing some of the big concerns here about the um lack of clear communication uh around protocols and around nuts and bolts things that we need before we can go back to bringing everybody in person into the building. And um I think those of us who are in ed- education and are in the day-to-day um put out a lot of documents that seem clear to us because we are working on them. Um, you know, uh twenty-four seven, it feels like during this pandemic. And um they're just not being, getting uh put out in a way that's clear to the community or to the staff of the high school. Um, a lot of the K-12 documents often um are not specific to the needs and the way that the high school runs. And so we as a faculty have been um operating on a timeline that we could probably recite for you, much like you gave us your timeline and how you've worked with the engineers in ways that we have reached out to administration and to um central office. The way that Amy Dobson said should have been done before it got to a point where we've reached out to the board because we weren't getting information. Um, so I can tell you that this is not, these protocols, while you may feel they are are in place, we don't know them. And that's why we're asking for the information. We want our families to feel secure bringing their students and their children back. And we wanna feel that we have everything we need to do our jobs of educating the kids um in a, in an environment that we feel safe doing that. Everything now, the latest, is that it's um the air that transmits this virus. And so we have cleaning protocols, but we need to know what it is about the ventilation of this building. Um, we need to know what students are gonna be doing when they eat lunch in our classrooms. So Ms. Schultz, who talks about, you know, what is the schedule of my freshman students who have two very different schedules? Those are very real questions that we also are asking as a faculty. So these are very real concerns that these nuts and bolts are what we're looking for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Noel Murphy? Yes, hello, thank you. I'm Noel Murphy. And I would just like to reiterate the the very uh kind of critical need for this kind of detailed information to get in the hands of parents so that we can make the decision about whether we would send our children back to the school building. Um, so I I too wanna add my voice to some of the concerns that Ms. Schultz has raised, that Amy Dobson has raised, and that Chris Hanson herself has just raised as well. And, you know, the example about hand washing i- is a good one because of course all of our teenagers know that they're supposed to wash their hands. But but how are kids supposed to wash their hands in a school building? When they have ten minutes maybe between classes? It's not clear if they'll be passing between classes or staying in one classroom space. And then we have hundreds of students trying to get into the same bathrooms that don't have adequate ventilation. It's that level of detail that I think parents need in order to make the decisions that they need to make to keep their kids safe. So it's really like those questions, how are we gonna handle passing it between classes? How are hundreds of students going to get through the same entrance to have their temperature screened and still maintain social distancing? When they all enter through the the same courtyard entrance? But like, that information is information that's not yet in parents' hands. And it's, it's that kind of detail that I feel like I need. Thank you.
There are people out there, excuse me.
One more. Um, P, it's not in.
Do we have that last person, Frank?
Yes, just wants. He he needs to unmute himself? I think he is.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, would you please give us your name?
I'm, my name is Edward Swazowski. Um, for twenty-five years, I was a investigator in the area of environmental and occupational medicine and was pre-qualified by the state of Vermont for the position of director of environmental health programs before I retired. I've been sitting here for fifty-two minutes listening to uh what I consider to be a group of people who have really missed the boat in terms of addressing this issue of health and safety and COVID and school opening. The gold standard, in my opinion, uh for approaching this problem is the document by the CDC. And I worked, worked as a consultant to the CDC and NIH entitled, Preparing K-12 School Administrators for Safe Return to School in the Fall. It includes the comment, "Schools should work closely with health officials to make decisions on whether to maintain school operations." Health officials, not Vermont efficiency, not HVAC people who are pretty clueless when it comes to disease and transmission. But people who have an understanding of what medicine and disease and pandemics is all about. One person that I know has written, "Even school ventilation systems in perfect condition cannot totally solve issues around airborne transmission." According to Dr. Edward Nardell, a professor of global health and social medicine at Harvard Medical School. "The reason is that ventilation are designed for comfort, not infection control," Dr. Nardell said. "Even optimally functioning ventilation will not prevent transmission in classrooms." This is not some local yokel. This is the world expert who consults to the CDC and other major entities. Talking about HVAC systems i- is really interesting, but we're not really talking in this issue about air quality. We're talking about the transmission of potential disease. Why are you handling the situation by hiring HVAC engineers to come in and look at air s- air flows and air quality, which has to do with particulates, not disease? Instead of looking at a CIH or other professional who can look at situations involving the spread of disease? It it, air quality is not the same thing as transmission of disease. I recommend that the parents go to the CDC site, look at the CDC documents, which are updated almost daily as far as information, and realize that these are just starting point recommendations. Why isn't the school board working with the state environmental health people, the state department of health, CIH, and other people to help define what is truly a safe practice to open the schools? Nurses are great people, but nurses do not have the training or the understanding or the forethought to understand how to best protect teachers and school, staff in schools, and students in schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody like to respond to that?
Hi, hi, I'm Liz Howe. I don't know if my hand was noticed before. Is this a?
Okay, go, go ahead, Liz.
Go ahead. I just wanna say um, thank you so much for listening to this um and for hearing, for hearing everyone out. I teach ceramics and I haven't taught clay since the second week of March. Um, it's, it's uh, it's fun coming up with new projects, uh challenging, but um it's not. You know, I love ceramics. Um, and I would like to teach it again. I think that I'd just like to echo what other people have said, you know, that there are levels of complexity to this that just haven't um made it into uh, it it, they have not been cl- become clear. Um, if someone has symptoms, they can't come to school. But are they sick? You know, um, if, you know, can, can we take a class outside? And we are told we can't take classes outside because they can't cross in the hallway. And so there are a lot of things that um I think, you know, that seem like they'd be really helpful for people and really helpful for the school to kind of make it function a little bit more um safely. Um, the teachers have tried really hard. The head teachers have worked very, very hard all summer to to help, to try to help. Um, I'm one of the reps. I started, I stepped into this role two weeks before we closed. And this is not what I anticipated. I just thought, I'll step in, there's room, I'll see what I can do, I'll see what I, if I can help. And I hate to say it, but it's, it's um, it's been very emotional and stressful. And um, it's not the way that I'm used to working with people, to just sit down and and really talk things out. And um, it's uh, it's been very difficult. Um, you know, I I would do whatever I could to help um make things safer and um make things safer for everyone. And um, I'm not sure that that I've been able to do that or been welcome to do that at all. Um, to bring ideas together, to, to bring all of us together at the high school, to really come up with nailing down some hard, fast answers and solutions to some of these real granular level uh concerns. So um, I just really, thanks for hearing me out and um thank you for having us tonight. Um, I hope everyone stays well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Frank, are there others?
I'm not seeing any.
All right, if if not, then we'll move on.
There is. No, there is. I'm sorry.
Could I ask, could I ask the speaker previous to Liz? I I would love for him to contact my office tomorrow, so get some contact information so I could have further conversation. I didn't get his name, but I'm I'm sure Richard will have it in the minutes, but the speaker from right, right before Liz.
Right.
If he, if he's still on and listening to me, you can call the superintendent's office tomorrow. Uh, I'm in meetings most of the morning, but leave your contact information. I'd like to reach out to you.
Thank you, Jim. It's a good idea. Okay, uh Frank, you said you had somebody else?
Yes. Hi, I'm Jill Van Orden, and I teach art at the high school. And um my dad taught at the high school for, I think, thirty-five years. And um, I I went to preschool in the high school. And Judy, um, I'm gonna call her by her maiden name. Um, anyway, I've been there for a very long time and it, it means the world to me. It's a second home to me. Um, I'm a little nervous right now, but I just wanna say something came up this week that was kind of unexpected for me. And I imagine it's gonna come up a lot, and it's very complicated. Um, so I went into school on Monday and I went to the health screening. And um, one of the questions is, do you have a sore throat? And, you know, in all honesty, I woke up a little scratchy throat and the kind of thing that probably many people during golden rod season wake up with. And um, but I'm maybe um, you know, to err on the side of caution, I said, you know, just a little bit, but I'm not sick. I checked myself for fever. I feel great. Um, I'm right, I'm here ready to work. But it was determined that because um sore throat is on the list of things, um, that it was best if I go home. But it was determined that because um sore throat is on the list of things um that it was best if I go home. I imagine this is gonna come up a lot, that there are things on the list like headaches, sore throats, coughs, um which many people experience starting this time of year especially. Um, that's going to cause people to have to go home maybe at the start of the day, um maybe in the middle of the day when they develop a headache during class. And with the um unavailability or or complexity of having substitutes during this time, um it raises a lot of questions, I guess. I don't know what my specific question is, but are these sick days that we have to take if we feel well enough to work at home? Where the symptom is mild or uh how would we address that in the middle of the day? So um I hope I articulated that clearly. Thank you.
You did. Thank you.
Thank you. That's that's a good point. Thank you. Frank?
Obviously some guidance, um Jill, that we're gonna need to refine. So I did hear a little bit about, I didn't know who it was that that someone uh reported a sore throat, so we're meeting with our COVID nineteen coordinator and getting guidance from Vermont Department of Health to update our our guidance to the screeners on on that issue. And I will say this about working remote, one thing that with encouraged principles, because of exactly what you mentioned, the the lack of subs or the unavailability of enough subs, that if someone can work remotely, then then they should, and and the principal can accommodate, like not everyone's job is gonna be able to done remotely. But if that was that situation, then I I would encourage and I will encourage principals, then that they should allow that person to work the home and work remotely. Though there'll be some, obviously there'll be some loss of time and depending on how far far away you live to go back to uh uh home to to teach remotely. But we'll uh we'll make sure that we that we we know that that glitch came up this week because the screening is in place and uh so we we obviously have to refine that with the guidance on what do we do if one of those symptoms comes up, which like you said, you know, it it is uh it is allergy season for many of us, myself included, so. And what what do you do if if you self-screen in the morning? So that was the other thing that we, you know, that uh that came to our attention this week too with self-screening. People that felt, you know, should I not come in or should I come in because of one of the symptoms on the question? But we will address that.
Thank, thank you, Jim.
Madeline Degler, please unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Madeline Degler. I'm the school counselor at the high school. Um, thank you so much for having me here tonight. Thank you so much, everyone, for speaking. It's great uh to be getting a lot of feedback and hearing about what's going on. I myself, like a lot of my uh peers, uh have not heard a lot of information. Uh, as a school counselor, I'm used to being a liaison between families and the school. That's what I do. That's what I'm used to. What I'm finding is a lot of my families haven't heard anything. I have a lot of parents reaching out to me saying that they aren't being contacted by the school, that they haven't heard much just about protocol for the school year. And when they ask me questions, I don't have answers. And my job is to be able to give them answers and be able to help them and be able to support them. So I'm very anxious to do that and I'm very anxious to help support the community. Um, and I look forward to hearing uh what the plan is. Thank you.
Yep. Frank?
Not seeing anyone, but I can't seem to unmute them anyway, so I guess.
Well, well, let's move on and the people will have opportunities when we get down to the principal's report to to ask questions there. Uh, okay, we go down to to finance. Uh, we need a motion to accept the treasurer's report. Fran, will you make a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Or Leon? Do you have a second?
Second, Ed, Dan.
Thank you. Any questions? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, I, when that passes, we have the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to accept the consent agenda? Thank you, Fran. Do you have a second?
Yeah, a second.
Thank you. Any any discussion on the consent agenda? If not, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed or abstentions? Very good. Policies? There are none. We go down to committee reports. As most of you know, uh, we had an education meeting. Amy, would you like to give a short uh brief description of that? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. And thank you to the principals for attending that meeting. I think it was last week, maybe it was two weeks ago. Um, it was a long meeting, so I really appreciate uh Dr. Nixon and Mr. Payne sticking around for two hours to answer lots of questions. Um, Mr. Payne gave a really thorough report about all sorts of things at the middle school, um talked about standards, meeting standards at each grade level, um meeting with his data team to keep on top of monitoring students um in light of there not being spring map testing. Talked about social emotional supports, um talked about the opportunities that the long um professional development period allotted them uh and spoke very highly about how well that time was spent. And then also went through schedules. Dr. Nixon gave a good report. Uh, he talked a lot about the scheduling and how the student's scheduling and how those schedules were rearranged and determined um and and some other logistical aspects um going on at the high school. So it was, it was just good to have that touch base with the principals after, since they weren't um at the August meeting. So I appreciated that time. Thank you.
Anything else? Any questions for Amy about the education meeting? If not, we'll move on then to the administrator's report. Why don't we start off with the high school? That would be Steve Nixon. Steve?
Thank you, Tim. Uh, for those of you who were at the education meeting, uh, some of this may be redundant and I apologize for that upfront. Uh, I'd like to start with uh where we started, which was back in the summer. And we had to begin student scheduling. And student student scheduling was an extremely difficult task for us this year, something that traditionally takes us about five days to do, took us well over five weeks to do with eight to ten people working on it daily. And one of the reasons for that is because of social distancing. We can only get X amount of students into a particular classroom. So we have less students per classroom, but we still have the same amount of teachers. And we had to think outside the box on several occasions to try to make this work, to get every student when they came back into the building, to get the classes that were particularly needed. Uh, in order to do that, uh, we first looked at health as the number one priority in coming back to the building. And in talking with our nurses, we found out that transition periods, which is when students move from one particular period to another period, is the highest risk for transmission because that's when the largest amount of students are in the hallway and they're passing. So our goal going into this, on top of trying to figure out how to get the same amount of students into half as many classes, was to figure out how we can get students safely around the building without transmitting anything to each other. And we set our goal of trying to make one transition, the maximum number of transitions that we would do in the day. There were some possible ways of doing, uh even less, doing no transitions in the course of the day. Now, in order to do that, uh, we put students into cohorts. And the way we did cohorts and none of our computer programs were able to to deal with anything in the situation. Everything was done by hand. So basically to do cohorts, I sat down with every freshman student's schedule in front of me and figured it out by hand, which took days for us to do this. And what we did was freshmen and sophomores are the easiest to put into cohorts because they need the most courses. So they take a lot of similar courses. Juniors and seniors are much more difficult to put into cohorts because their schedules are much more diverse. So stu- uh, juniors and seniors have taken more, most of their core curriculum already, so we find that they have a lot of additional courses, such as electives and uh art. And so therefore, there's not enough in the same group to put them into cohorts. So we did that. We put all students with like schedules, freshmen and sophomores that we worked through, and put them into cohorts. If students aren't in cohort, that is because there's something that jumps out that makes it different than the rest of the other students. So for example, um if you have nine A English, you have a basic nine A uh social studies and a basic nine A science, but you're advanced in math and you have to take uh an algebra trig, say, for example, it would be something that, you know, a sophomore or junior would take. You're not gonna fit in the cohort because no other freshmen have that course. So that's how it was determined to do cohorts and it was a very time-consuming process. We couldn't get everybody, but we knew going in, we we couldn't get everybody. That wasn't the goal. The goal was, how can we keep the least amount of students out in the hall during transition? So we put about two, we were able to get about two hundred students into cohorts, which meant if we're operating at fifty percent capacity in the building and we have about four hundred and fifty students in the building, we've now cut that number in half for transitions because two hundred of those students aren't gonna transition at all. So that was a lot of work, but we feel it's worth it. We went around, I I walked around the building with uh Tony DiNofrio, our our maintenance uh head, and we went into every single classroom and we looked at social distancing. We had to take a lot of things into consideration because it's an old building and not all the rooms are the same. There's there was additions put on. So some uh some rooms are bigger, some rooms are smaller. The other thing that we had to do to compensate for the fact that we had many more students than we had classes for was we had to come up with what we call uh super rooms. So since we were, we were stuck by the guidelines of six-foot distancing, your average standard classroom can get somewhere between eight and ten students in there. But if you have extra students left over, you have to compensate somehow. So we have some double rooms in in the high school, uh up in the humanities wing. We have um, we have the auditorium, we have the library. So we have some rooms that could accommodate more than the standard classroom would with the social distancing in effect. And so we have, I believe, there's eight, what we're calling super rooms that we're using that can hold a standard-sized class, but do it effectively with the distancing. And that's still with fifty percent of the class being home. So that's how we did that. And we had, remember, when this is all going on, things have changed three, four, or five times since we were doing this over the summer. Things were changing weekly. And what we were looking at is, at one point, we were looking at not coming back until the end of October. So I understand, we apologize for the fact that the scheduling took so long, but it's something we never did before and there were a lot of loopholes that we had to figure out that we had never figured out before and how to make it work within all the guidelines. And so in doing that, we were, we had to take things a step at a time. You, we can't, we couldn't multitask because we had, we had to deal with something because things lead into other things, lead into other things. And so we didn't do any freshman scheduling because at that time, the freshmen were coming back at the end of October. So I I hear what everyone said is that they haven't heard about a freshman's schedule because there was no intentions of having a freshman's schedule. Our our belief at the time was everyone was coming back. When we found out a couple of weeks ago that now the plan is starting to bring freshmen back, now we have to start working on the freshman scheduling and how that works. And again, the computer was of no use to us. Monday and Tuesday, we spent the entire day, those days, with eight people in a room, with every freshman's student's schedule and a list of every freshman's name because we had to break down which students had to come to school on Mondays and which students had to stay home. And we put a lot of time and effort and thought into that. There are other high schools in the area who didn't, who just basically said, we're gonna cut them off alphabetically. Well, you can't cut a class in half alphabetically because not all classes are equal alphabetically. So what these other schools found is, one day, you would have two students in the class because there was only two As, but most of the class had students M and above, and now you'd have fifteen kids the next day. And it didn't work. But we thought about that before we went into it, and that's why we hand-scheduled every single freshman. I promised the freshman parents when I first, uh, all parents, not just the freshman parents, that we would be in contact with them on a weekly basis with a minimum of one contact. We have exceeded that every single week since I made that promise to the parents. This Friday, the freshman's schedule was going out because we just finished it. So we weren't able to put it out any sooner because we didn't expect freshmen to be back any sooner. So this Friday is the letter, the weekly letter that I sent to parents, which will explain the whole process of how it will work for freshmen, how we will have a freshman orientation on certain days because these are things that we weren't planning for for months and we had to up the schedule. And we finished it all. So that will be going out on Friday. While we were doing this, we also had to deal with other issues. So we had to deal with book distribution. Now, we spent the entire summer, it seems, at some point with Chromebooks, either giving them out or taking them back or giving them out, taking them back, and giving them out again. So we had a lot of practice with distribution, but then when we had to distribute books, it was different because every student who picks up a Chromebook, a Chromebook is a Chromebook. But every student who picks up a book, it's not the same schedule, so they need different books. So we began that distribution today from eight o'clock until three o'clock. And tomorrow, we'll finish it from eight o'clock until three o'clock. Today, we dealt with the schedules of two hundred and fifty students and gave out textbooks attached to all four of those classes for those two hundred and fifty students. Our cafeteria had tables lined up with every core curriculum class, language, art, music. We were giving out flutes, we're giving out guitars, we're giving out paintbrushes, we're giving out books, we're giving out uh paper, we're giving out pencils. We had to distribute a lot of things and a lot of uh recognition has to go to the staff that that helped do that today. Uh, the parents drove, drove up in their car. They gave us their student's schedule. We brought it inside. We got all of the books that the parents needed for their, for their child, and we brought it back out to the car for them. So that that worked very well considering we'd never done that before. Uh, a lot of these things, we've never done before. Can we do things better? Definitely, without a doubt. And now that we have the knowledge, hopefully we'll never have to use it again. But if we do, we'll be prepared and we'll be prepared a lot quicker and we'll be a lot more thorough at it. We are basically breaking the freshman groups into two. Uh, when we did it, we used the highlighters that we had candies, which meant one group was yellow and one group was orange. But in keeping with the themes that most schools seem to do, is keeping with school colors, we're going to have two groups. We're going to have a blue group and a red group. So we have published the schedule for the uh for the hybrid learning. And basically what that is, is there's period one and two on Monday, period three and four on Tuesday. Wednesday is an asynchronous day, which is teacher contact time. Thursdays is back to schedule one and two, and on Fridays is three and four. And then we had to split each of those classes in half. And that's what I was saying before when we did it by hand, to decide which students will be in on Monday, which students will be home on Monday, which students will be in on Thursday, which students will be home on Thursday. And so one of the groups, if if your child is coming to school on Monday, they will come to school on Monday for their first and second period class. They will come to school on Tuesday for their third and fourth period class. On Thursday and Friday, the students who were in the building on Monday, Tuesday will be home. The students who are home on Monday and Tuesday will come into the building on Thursday and Friday. And that's what's taking so long because each individual parent now needs to know which group your child belongs to and what day they're coming in for what class. The A B day, which I just explained, is basically we took, we took the four periods, split it over two days. And we do it Monday and Tuesday. We take the, it's basically gonna stay on Wednesday. And again, one, two, three, four, again, Thursdays and Fridays. In in the last couple of weeks, we had parent meetings, parent Zoom meetings in the evening. We met with every parent classroom, freshmen, sophomores, juniors, and seniors. We had over two hundred parents attend these. Uh, I was at these meetings. We had, I was there and I explained everything that I'm just explaining to you now. The the assistant principals were there. Uh, the, the assistant principals were there, they talked about discipline, they talked about movement through the building. We had the nurses who talked about all of the COVID preparation that we had done in the building and how checkings would work. We had clinicians to talk about social emotional health with any students and how they could uh. As clinicians told the parents how their child could access it. We had our, our athletic director who ta- uh talked about athletics and how that was progressing. And we also had guidance to talk about how scheduling was done and if there were any issues with scheduling, who to contact and how to remedy that. So that's basically what we've been doing up to this point. Like I said, the next correspondence will go out on Friday, which will give us all the information about freshmen. Uh, our goal, we've been working closely with the middle school. Uh, and we're to keep things in par. Uh, as we're bringing back the ninth graders, I'm sure I don't wanna take away attempt time, uh, but. The middle school's bringing back sixth graders when we're bringing back, bringing back ninth graders. And so we're working in sync, so both of the schools are, look very similar in how things are operating. And um, that's basically it. If you have any specific questions, I will gladly take them. Oh, the one other thing is we are working, working on a two week transition period. So we have some identified students who were chosen as five oh four students or special education students or students without internet uh connectivity. And we have brought them back into the building this week. So they were the first uh students back into the building. We are looking to see if we can expand upon that with some other students who may additionally need service for next week. And that's our two week uh window. Then freshmen come back on the twenty eighth and they will be back for two weeks. And again, this is process that we're working with the middle school on and then we will reassess after the two weeks. As I've told everyone that I've spoken to, everything that we've done so far is on paper. It hasn't gone live. We don't know how it will work. And so, once we see how it works, we will assess it and see where we needed to fix things, where we were successful with things. Once that's determined, then the high school and the middle school will determine where our next step is and who do we bring back next. Do we bring back just one grade because we still have to work on things? Or do we feel that it's smooth and safe enough that we can bring everyone back into the building two weeks after the freshman? As we sit here, we don't have those answers, but we'll, the closer we get to that date. So that's basically what we've been doing at the high school and how we've been working out scheduling and splitting the students and getting the information out. And if you have any questions, I'd gladly take them.
Thank you, thank you Steve. Uh, are there any questions for, for Mr. Nixon, Steve Nixon?
Yeah, uh, Tim, I have a question. Um, Steve, can you speak to, I under- I, I hear you, what you say about um not knowing. Where the holes are until everything's put into practice and being nimble, being able to adjust. Um, as things come up and changes get made, I think that's just the name of the game right now and it's really encouraging to hear that awareness. But I am left with, um, one of your staff members um, mentioned earlier tonight um, from the faculty meeting that there were. Sh- that there was a feeling of not good guidance or understanding about how attendance should be taken. How grading should ha- be happening and what cleaning protocols are. And I'm just wondering if you can speak to. Not only the specific issues, but um. Uh, what you feel might be missing in the communication there or, or is there not? Is there misunderstandings or if we can kind of address that specific issue a little bit?
Let's take grading, for example, the que- the question is, I remember from the meeting, uh, I believe had to do with how we were putting. Uh, there was two, two phases to the question. There was how are we putting uh standardized based grading, standard based grading. Into uh, into the gradebook. The others were that teachers were doing grading through Google. And what had to be done because our, our platform that we use for official grading is in uh Infinite Campus. And the response that we gave is. We need you to put the grades into Infinite Campus. And the reason that I gave at the meeting for doing that is parents need to know what assignments are missing. Where there's stands at that point in time with grades. And especially with, with standard based grading, they have the right to try and improve some of their standard grades and go back and improve things. But if they don't know what, what lessons were put in there individually, they wouldn't be able to do that. So that was my answer to that. As for the, the specifics of putting things into Infinite Campus. I offer to have Beth Becker, who is our data person, to do a Zoom meeting with the teachers so she could bring. Uh, share screen of, of the gradebook and answer any particular question by any teacher to do that. As for attendance, I, I might, I might have slipped from my mind there, but I don't remember a discussion on attendance. Attendance has always been what it is. It's students come into your class, you took, we ask to take attendance immediately. It's sent down to our attendance person who puts it into, into Infinite Campus so it can be related to the state. That hasn't changed. So I'm not aware of what the attendance issue was.
Thank you. Are there, are there other questions?
And Tim, they're asking, cause we should point out that, you know, unless you're gonna alter your protocol, that. The public comment section of the meeting is over and the questions you're taking now to principals are from the board. You wanna follow your policy?
Yeah, we, we, we'll follow that. We'll wait until Tim. We did say that there would be an opportunity for people to um. Ask some questions after the principal's report and we'll just see.
I thought you were referring to board members, cause you did have an extensive public comment period, but that is.
Well, maybe.
I'm just telling, remind you what the po- what your policy is. State that clear, if you're gonna allow that, that's your discretion, but Frank wants to know, cause he's got hands up. So I'm asking, cause Frank wanted to know what guidance he should be following.
Yes.
We don't typically begin, yeah.
Okay, anyway, Tim, we'll go, yeah, give us some thought here. Thank you. Tim?
Tim, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Uh, Dave? It, it, yeah, I'm not sure that it's for uh, for Dr. Nixon or maybe for uh Jim Superintendent called Keith. Um, the, are buses still planning to, we expecting buses to be operating uh, starting Monday?
No, the twenty eighth buses can start operating.
Twenty eighth, okay.
Monday, the twenty eighth.
And, and have the schedules been published? Are parents uh aware of the schedules yet?
Schedules, schedules will be hopefully completed by September eighteen. The buses, the bus routes will not be the same as what they were last year, cause there's less students riding the bus. Buses because that were limited to twenty four students per bus. We're really trying to encourage anyone who can do alternate transportation to do that. So then a result, then we did a survey of parents of who needed uh bus transportation. So. I wanna say la- uh, a week ago Friday, that went to the tech department. Cause they use our VersiTran software to build bus schedules. I'm told it takes at least ten days to build the bus schedules, you know, with all the various routes in there and they do that in conjunction and do for transportation. So um, so that we will have it to announce to parents the bus routes by the eighteenth to start the twenty fourth. Thank you.
Are there any other questions of, from board members uh for Steve Nixon? If not, we'll go on to Tim. Tim Payne? Frank, is Tim there? He's here, but he may be having uh audio issues, I'm not sure. Well, we'll give him, we'll give him a few minutes here.
He is using a different computer. He's having issues with that.
Okay. He's, he's talking, but we're not hearing him. I see.
Tim's talking, but he's not here. He don't have any voice.
I see. I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. Has he tried, uh, you know, using the, the telephone number to, to, to call?
I'm gonna, I'm texting him that right now.
Does he have that number? Nine, two, nine?
He's trying to log back on.
I would, I would have him try that telephone number. I've had to do that in the past.
He's down in panel tonight too, so that's, you know, probably why.
We, we, we have phones, we have phones down here.
I can see him, I'd like to report, he's looking mighty snappy.
Tim, have you?
Does he, has he given you a thumbs up that he's calling in? Frank, can you see that?
No, he didn't give me a thumbs up, but he looks like, I see the glare of his cellphone on his face within his glasses, so he may be just trying to do that.
All right, but I don't see him trying to get into the meeting on the participants.
Well, we're waiting. He's asking for the phone number. He's asking for the phone number.
I'm text, tell him I'm texting it right now to him. Tell him I just, Tim, if you could hear me, I just sent you the phone number for you to call in.
He got a thumbs up.
Okay.
Phone's on his ear. He's looking over the first lady.
So for any of you board members who, who don't realize it, this is also what it's like in classes. When kids can't log in and they're having issues with their internet, so we're very used to this.
Hey, Tim?
Yes.
So I, am, am I, can everybody hear me?
Yes, yep, yes, we can.
We can hear you.
We can hear you, we can't.
I think, uh, I don't know, for whatever reason, when I dial that it bumps me out of the meeting on my computer. I'm sorry, everybody.
Anyway, we, we, we hear you fine, Tim. Go ahead.
Okay, well, I apologize. This is the fourth device I have murdered in the last five days, so don't trust me with anything technological. Um, all right, so Amy covered quite a bit of my uh, report from the subcommittee last week. So Amy, please feel free if you want me to repeat anything. Um, I was going to go back to uh, just opening day for us. Uh, mostly positive feedback from staff and teachers. Uh, families have been calling in for helpless technology that seems to be slowing down as the week has progressed, which is a good thing, but. We'd absolutely encourage families to continue to reach out to us. Uh, still handing out uh Chromebooks. But update from when the last time we met as with the board, um. This Monday, the fourteenth, we had a small group of students join us. Uh, they were being, uh, we've been successful in screening them for help in the morning. Uh, their school day is nine thirty to twelve thirty. They are with us four days a week. That's Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. Um, there is limited transportation available to kiddos right now. It's based mostly on their, um, their plans, their individual plans. Um, thanks to the uh, um, Abby group, we're able to provide breakfast and lunch as well. Um, much like the high school, we are um, working within a two week uh. Interval to bring in additional students. Uh, we, I've had conversations with Don Campbell, who's the new associate. Director for Student Services. Um, I think we got a handful of kids that we will consider bringing in sooner than uh the twenty eighth, which is our next. Kind of goalpost. The twenty eighth is, um, as Steve mentioned, that's when we are planning to bring in the sixth grade. Uh, similar to the high school, we've broken the uh, the team. We have two teams at the sixth grade level, Okemo and Stratton. And we are in the process of dividing both those teams into cohorts, a red and a blue team. The planning is that students would be in the building for in-person instruction two days a week. And the three days a week, the remaining three days would be remote. Uh, similar to Steve's experience, uh, Infinite Campus has proven to be less than flexible in the age of COVID, but. Um, I think we've got some solutions. We've been working pretty consistently with um, all sixth grade teachers, uh, core teachers and unifieds. Uh, admin and support staff. We've had uh, daily meetings, uh, just trying to get questions and concerns from staff. Um, they, they definitely poked some holes in some plans that we had, so we've had to go back and uh, look at things. Uh, we also benefit from Ashley Walker, she's a, hello?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Is, is my phone working fine for everybody?
No, no, that was my fault. I just had a phone call and I hung up, so I'm, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay, but before that, was it okay for everybody?
Yes, everybody, at least I could hear you fine.
Okay, uh, so uh, working with Ashley, you know, uh, I heard concerns from the community about the. Entry and exit criteria. Um, I'll talk a little bit about how we're gonna communicate that with families. Um, as far as movement is concerned, um, our focus is limiting the amount of transitions in the building. So kids will definitely be uh, home based in their pods. Uh, trying to limit it to, you know, one or two transitions, which will probably mean, uh, you know, cohorts uh. Together for traveling through the day through their core classes and are unified. Again, this is out of an abundance of caution. We wanna limit the amount of exposure for kiddos. Um, we've built time at the end of the day so that we have staggered exiting from the building. Uh, so there's a lot of things kind of in, in play or being planned. Uh, the next big thing, of course, is gonna be communication. Uh, what we have used in the month of August to communicate with our families. Uh, we've used the K twelve alert email, we've used robocalls, we've done, uh. I've made a video, thanks to Katie West, that opened up on uh YouTube and that's linked to the website for the school. Um, we use Facebook quite a bit as well. Uh, I know that there are families who are still not hearing um, updates from us. I really encourage families, we mailed home with the schedule. Uh, uh, family information sheet that you can update. We really encourage that you take our time to look at that, make sure it's accurate. Because if you've updated your cellphone or, you know, your email's been updated, we're missing you and that's not a good thing. We wanna make sure that you're getting information. Um, two things that I talked about last week with the board, we did have teacher resignations within the two weeks before school started. One was a social studies teacher on Team Ninia, the other was an ELA teacher on uh, uh Stratton in grade six. Uh, Ms. Weldon and Ms. Powers have both uh, moved on to other positions. We wish them well. Uh, thanks to Chris McGuire and the hiring committee at the middle school, we have uh, interviewed candidates. Uh, we've completed nomination forms and those have been forwarded to the um, central office for superintendent's review. I did make a promise to families that we would have those teachers in place by the start of the twenty eighth and we look like we're on track to meet that deadline. Uh, emails went out to, on Friday, email went out today and a robocall went up this afternoon. Uh, similar to what Steve was talking about, distribution of materials for the school day. We are available every school day from uh, nine to three, families can, uh, eight to three, families can stop by, pick up materials. We're also gonna host a drive-through tomorrow night from four thirty to six. Ours is a pretty shortlist. I can't speak to the high school's list, but if you have a sixth grade student. Um, on either Okemo or Stratton, you should come see us. We have materials for both the ELA class and math. Uh, the other shortlist is if your student, grade six, seven or eight is currently taking art. Music or sustainability in this trimester, we have supplies for you as well. Everything else, seventh grade core uh, classes, uh, any unifieds that I didn't list. Your student is all set, everything can be done through technology or we can wait until they start rotating through the buildings. Um, but that should help with that. Um, I think I covered already that families, just if they could really make sure you're looking at that updated contact information. Sending that in, we'd love to help you update that in the computer. Uh, and just in case a community member is listening, I did have someone leave me an voicemail on my answering machine. Asking me not to call their house anymore. I'm happy to comply with that request, but you'd please, you need to leave me a name and a number so I can call you back. And figure out where you're listed at Infinite Campus, so I. and figure out where you're listed at Infinite Campus so I stop bothering you at your house, which is a completely reasonable expectation on your part. But again, if you're going to leave me a message, please just identify yourself. I'm happy to follow up.
Thank you.
And that's it.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Jim, I I I've decided that we'll have a very, a short period of of questions. This is, this is a question, a period where individuals who are tuned in who would like to ask our administrative principals a question. Uh, this is not an op- this is not a an opportunity for people to to make a general comment on things. It is an opportunity for those people that are listening that would like to ask a principal a specific question. So Frank, thank you.
I'm not seeing anybody, but if um if somebody wants to ask a question, unmute yourself and and state your name.
Um, hi, I'm Katie Contrada. I teach uh social studies at the high school. My question is, Principal Nixon, I just would like to know, when were you made aware that the freshmen were to come back to the building on September twenty eighth? That's my question, thanks.
Probably two weeks. Two weeks ago, we we discussed that for the first time.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
Hi, yes, Patricia Johnson. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah, yeah, we can, Patricia.
Okay, uh, this question is for uh anybody that's um an employee at this point at the middle school or high school.
This would be, this this would be questions for either uh principal of the high school or the middle school.
Okay, so my question is, and I apologize if I missed it earlier, what is the education that's being provided to the students on COVID nineteen, uh, social distancing, PPE, and um cough and sneeze etiquette?
I believe that we're we're going to have something uh embedded in our seminar when the students get back into the building.
Tim, would you like to comment on that?
Uh, similar, similar in the mi- in the middle school, we use advisory and there are lessons embedded in advisory to help kids transition back into the building.
Thank you. Frank, are there others?
I'm not seeing that.
If there are not others, I do not have.
I have, I have a question. Sorry.
Yes, yeah, go ahead.
So if our kids are out for sick and.
Say, say the name again.
Mia Schultz.
Gotta say the name so Richard can record it.
My name is Mia Schultz.
And and who was this question directed to?
Um, either of the principals.
All right, go ahead.
Um, if what, the the attendance was briefly talked about, but if they are sick due to either COVID nineteen or anything else, will this be counted like against them in terms of being ill, gone, out of class? I mean, out of school, attendance-wise?
No, any, any illness is an excused absence, ma'am.
Okay.
Tim?
I I mean, what, well, we try, we tell parents that, you know, absolutely don't send your kid to school if they're not feeling well. We really encourage that. Uh, remote learning does give us an opportunity for kids to catch up. But my first, my first comment to any parent was, if you feel like your kiddo's not feeling well, please don't send him to the building. That's a, you know, that's an easy first step to help us keep everybody healthy and safe. Um, we don't mark as uh either excused or unexcused. We just simply mark you as being absent. Uh, but we can absolutely add a note that, you know, either you are calling in sick or that you are a doctor or your family has determined that you have to stay in quarantine or you have to stay home for a period of time. But we just simply mark you as absent.
Okay, I'm just worried for truancy, like uh truancy issues or anything like that, or.
Thank you, yeah.
Yeah, I I absolutely understand that concern and uh you should assume that a family gets a phone call from school that says, hey, I, you know, I see you're missing a few days and understanding, you know, communication back and forth with the family. Hey, Tim, my kiddo's staying home because I've got to keep him in quarantine. And that would simply be made as a note. Uh, barring no note, then we could have a conversation about how we get our student back into school.
Got you.
Thank, thank, thank you. Frank? Yes, Jill Van Orden? Go ahead.
Hi, Jill Van Orden. Um, I'm also a mom of a high school student, so I'll ask this from a mom perspective. Um, I hadn't even thought of this before, uh, I believe Noel Murphy asked earlier, maybe, or maybe another parent um about hand washing, because I have a sink in my class. But I wondered if the district for other schools or our school had ordered or thought about ordering um portable sinks for I think many classrooms don't have sinks, and that might solve the having to go into um the bathroom where only one at a time could go in. So I'm just curious about that. Thank you.
Guidance we've received on portable sinks is not to install them because of uh the problem of cleaning and disinfecting them, and they can, they have a very small um wastewater container that needs to be emptied. So guidance we have received so far is to not use them, because we had looked at them for like prey grounds and things like that.
Thank, thank you, Tim. Uh, Jim, Frank?
I'm not seeing hands. All right, well, we'll move on, and I do not have a
Okay, I I do not have a report. Frank, one last time to see if there's anybody out there that has a question?
Megan.
Um, this is just sort of quick, but uh, Tim Payne mentioned that uh you would be doing um lessons about, you know, direct instruction, about hand washing and social distancing and that sort of thing in advisory. Um, and from what we can tell, we're not having seminar this year uh in a traditional sense at the high school. So um, where will students be? I'm just asking, uh, Principal Nixon, where will students be getting that instruction?
I don't know who told you there wasn't going to be seminar.
Oh, okay. Um, all right, so our, okay, thanks.
Okay, does that, that answer your question? Okay, Frank?
I don't see any hands up.
All right, well, move on, then. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Do you have a second?
Second. Second.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions, I thank you all very much. I think it's been a productive meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.